Seconds for attendance list to populate. So it sounds like there's going to be about thirty folks joining us this evening. So let's give it a couple of minutes before we get started here. The list seems to have slowed down letting people in. So we'll go ahead to get started and I have a special helper Riley. It's an assist or I messed it up, didn't I? Told you I would come up here, Riley. So Riley's going to help us. He's going to gavel us into our meeting and you folks will get to see him in a little bit because he'll be also leading us into the pledge. So Riley, do gavel us in, please. Thank you very much. And with that tap of the gavel, I would like to call the Seneca Valley School District School Board Meeting work session of May third, 2021 to order. At this time, I would ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in memory of the lives lost due to COVID-19 and in reflection of those who are mourning loved ones recovering from the illness or who have been negatively impacted during this time. Thank you very much, and we'll ask Ms. Andresi for the Pledge of Allegiance introductions.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. So you briefly met or I led the pledge student. I'd like to welcome him to the microphone. Please welcome Riley Sanus, a third grader at Connequines Valley Elementary School. Riley, did I get the last name right? Is it Sanus?
Yes, it's Sanus.
Okay, make sure I got that right. So Riley is the son of Nate and Abby Sanus of Cranberry Township. Riley is also joined tonight by his big sister, Emma. There she is. She is a fifth grader at Evan City Middle School. Riley was nominated this evening by CVE School Administration. In fact, I would like to welcome and thank Mrs. Deanne Graham, Principal of CVE for the nomination. Mrs. Graham is here and for being here tonight in support of Riley. I would also like to thank Ms. Rachel Pull, his third grade teacher. Thank you for being here and joining us in support of Riley. So before we begin the pledge, Riley, I'd like to share a little bit with the board about you, your favorite subjects, and let me know if I get any of this wrong. Your favorite subjects are science and social studies. When you grow up, you would like to be either a professional football player or a video game designer.
Correct.
You love to play football, ice hockey and baseball, and you love to draw and write comics, correct?
Yes.
All right, I got it all right. So why don't you tell us a little bit? You were telling me earlier about how you like to or you recently drew a comic book and you had a favorite character. Can you tell the board a little bit about that?
Um, I made this series on a book that I've been making. I call it The Odd Magic because I was inspired by this book called The Upside Down Magic. Um, so I made it and the main character's name is Max.
Excellent. Great job. We can't wait to read it when, when you're complete with it and publish it.
I don't know if I'm going to publish it or not. I just made it for fun.
Do it for fun. That's great. So at this time, Riley is going to say the pledge. So I would welcome all of you to please stand here and at home if you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance, Riley, when you are ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republik for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent job. Earlier this evening, Riley received his medal and his I Led the Pledge t-shirt and his Seneca swag. So he's all set for school tomorrow. So we appreciate you all being here this evening. You did a fantastic job. So thank you again. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andresi. We'll move on to the roll call. Please, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Riedel. Mr. DiTullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Widowsen.
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll start our meeting with our information reports and I'll ask Ms. Andresi to take over again.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have several items of recognition this evening. It is with our deepest appreciation that we recognize and congratulate the following 2021 Seneca Valley School District retirees for their unwavering dedication and commitment to the Seneca Valley School District and its students. This group represents a combined five hundred and fifty-seven and a half years of service. It's amazing. They include Andrea Adrian, Senior High School, SVAOC Spanish teacher, and Andrea is joining us via Zoom this evening, just so you know. Joyce Andreon, she is a Rowan Elementary, third grade teacher, twenty-five years, and Joyce is also joining us via Zoom. Susan Brinker, Rowan Elementary Building Paraprofessional, twenty-one years. Susan is actually here in person, joining us. Steven Campos, Senior High School Classroom Paraprofessional, seven years. Wendy Carson, Rowan Elementary Music Teacher, twenty-four years. Sandy Corson, Central Office Secretary, nineteen years. Susan Dinger, Connequines Valley Elementary Music Teacher, twenty years, and Susan is here as well, joining us. Pat DeVito, Connequines Valley Elementary Personal Care Assistant Paraprofessional, twenty-one years. Pat is also here this evening. John Fetschko, Intermediate High School Chemistry Teacher, thirty years. John is joining us via Zoom. Jennifer Fiorenzo, Senior High School Cafeteria Cook, twelve years. Larry Foster, District Delivery Driver, thirty-three point thirty-three years. Max Gandy, Ryan Goyer Middle School Custodian, thirty-two years. Tamara Gill, Ryan Goyer Middle School Mathematics Teacher, twenty-one years. Mary Ann Graziano, Ryan Goyer Middle School Health and Physical Education Teacher, thirty-one point eight years. Kathy Mahoney, SV Academy of Choice Business Teacher, twenty-two years, and Kathy is here joining us in person. She is. Julie Mann, Hayne Middle School, sixth grade teacher, twenty-eight point five years. Carla Mantic, Ryan Goyer Middle School Classroom Paraprofessional, sixteen point five years. Kathleen Masters, Senior High School Personal Care Assistant Paraprofessional, six years. Lori Melberg, Intermediate High School Cafeteria Cook, five years. Jerry Miller, Director of Special Education, twelve and a half years, and Mr. Miller is here. There he is. Can never miss Mr. Miller. John Motill, Ryan Goyer Middle School, SVAOC Health Teacher, twenty-nine years. Debbie Shettler, Connequines Valley Elementary Cafeteria Manager, twelve years. Patty Smith, Central Office Secretary, twenty-three point seven-five years. Jacqueline Sokolowski, Senior High School Cafeteria, fourteen years. Robin Williams, Connequines Valley Elementary Secretary, twenty-nine point one-two years, and Robin is here as well. In here, Robin. David Wilson, Ryan Goyer Middle School, SVAOC Health and Physical Education Teacher, thirty years. Kathy Wilson, Ryan Goyer Middle School Science Teacher, thirty-one years. Due to the ongoing safety measures taking place due to COVID, we were unfortunately unable to all gather for a retirement reception or go through our reception line, which we typically have done, and then handed out retirement gifts during that time. However, we were able to provide those gifts to those in attendance tonight, and we'll be sure to mail the rest, their gifts as a token of our deep appreciation. At this time, Mr. President, I would invite you and any members of the board to share any thoughts that you may have with our retirees.
Is there any member of the board? Hearing or seeing? I definitely will. You know, five hundred and fifty-seven years of service. It's amazing that you all did this for us for all these years, and we truly appreciate it. You know, some of you have had my, my children, and I'm very sad to see you go. You have all meant something to someone in our district from what you do day in, day out for, you know, the twenty, thirty years that some of you have been here. It's amazing to see those, the way that you affect, you know, not just the students, but the families. You know, we know you, we've seen you all, you know, whether it be during a day in class, extracurricular activities, you know, concerts or whatever, being able to see you folks, you know, you don't always know who we are. We always see you around, so we do know who you are as a parent. As a board member, you know, you're what makes it special to be a Seneca Valley resident. Being a board member has been so easy because we have folks like you, you know, in the trenches, as Dr. Vitale always would say, you know, being able to do the things that you do day in and day out that makes us look good, and you make it look so easy because you're wonderful people. And the way that you are with our children, you know, not just from an education standpoint, but the nurturing standpoint that you all give them has meant so much. That's why we're a destination school district is because of the folks like you. So I appreciate everything you do. I wish I could say no to all these retirements and keep you on, but I also understand you burned it. I hope you enjoy it and, you know, anytime you want to come back, we always need subs. So, you know, as this, or as Dr. Vitale says, you're always welcome back to sub. You're always welcome back, and you're always going to be a member of the Seneca Valley family. Thank you very much. Dr. McCarty.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the district administration, I would like to say a few words simply because as I look through this list, I recognize all of these names. And, you know, of all years, right, to go out on retirement during this COVID year says so much about who you are as people. But I wish, and Ms. Andresi said it wouldn't be a good idea for me to acknowledge every single person and tell a little story, so I promise I won't do that. But I think it speaks to the, the family atmosphere that you create in this district and that, you know, the relationships that you have built, not only with your students. We know that, you know, every, as you look through this list of people, the responsibilities each of you hold may look a little bit different, but really why you are here is to support children. The beautiful part I get to see from my seat often is the relationships you build with each other as well as the community and how that transcends Seneca Valley into our community. And again, everyone's not always going to agree. Everyone's not always going to be on the same page, but when we focus on that goal of helping children and doing right by children, there's common ground that this group in particular has demonstrated for years and years and years. And when you throw out numbers like, what was that, Ms. Andresi? Five hundred fifty-seven point five years. It is bittersweet because we're taking a major hit as a system. When we lose people like you out of our system, that's a void that's just not replaced with a person. It's an opportunity for maybe someone new, but it doesn't replace the void of all of those relationships you have built, all of those lies that you've touched that exponentially becomes thousands and thousands of people who are in our society today. So for that, I'm truly grateful and honored that I had the ability to even work alongside all of you. Please take our sincerest gratitude for your service in this district. Thank you.
Now, we make them stay for the whole board meeting now so they can see how much fun this really is.
Well, actually, we're not, we're not quite finished because several of the retirees asked if they could say a few words.
Absolutely.
So I believe five of them have indicated that they would like to say a few words, and we're going to first start with Joyce Andreon, who I believe is joining us via Zoom. Dr. Polano, is Joyce there?
Yeah, she is joining us via Zoom. So Joyce, you should now have the opportunity to address the audience.
Okay, thank you. You can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I just wanted to tell, say that I've been a teacher for Seneca Valley for twenty-two years, and during that time, I've developed relationships with colleagues, students and community, community members that I will always cherish. Teaching in this district has, has been a privilege, and I'm grateful I've had this opportunity to do so. So I wanted to thank you for that. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Joyce. Next, we have, I would like to invite Susan Brinker from Rowan to join us at the podium.
I'm going to be very brief, too. I just want to thank you for the opportunity. Someone hired me twenty-one years ago to work for Seneca Valley, and I thank them very much. It was Dr. Marchi and Dr. Jerry Faust that hired me, so I was very grateful for that. I've worked alongside some phenomenal teachers and paraprofessionals, dedicated custodians and caring and compassionate administrators. At Rowan, we're a big family. Some of you have had children that went to Rowan, and we just like to think of ourselves as a big family, and I'm really going to miss them. I've seen thousands of children in twenty-one years walk through those doors. I still keep in touch with some of them via social media, some of their parents also, and I'm truly grateful for that because those are relationships that just, I mean, when I think of a little boy in kindergarten that I worked with twenty years ago, and I still keep in touch with him, that's, that's great. I love that kid. What I'm going to do in the future, I love to travel. I hope to knock some things off my bucket list, see my grandchildren in Colorado more often, and that's about it for me. Take some time for myself. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to work for this great school district.
Next, we have, and maybe she'll sing for us, Susan Dinger from CVE.
Thank you for inviting me to be here this evening, and thank you for allowing me to be a part of the Seneca Valley School District for the past twenty years. I have always been very proud of being a part of the music department repeatedly over the years, such as at conferences and workshops. I've seen and heard other music educators from other districts' reactions when I say I teach at Seneca. Our music department is held in high regard. When I watch the band perform at football games or hear the Madrigals sing, I can't help but smile just a little, and I think to myself, I taught them what a quarter note was or how to match pitch a long time ago, or at least I tried to. Now, this is when I'm going to step up on my soapbox to say, please continue supporting the wonderful arts programs that we have at Seneca. For some students, these are their very most important and favorite classes. I have said, true statement, many, many times, just ask my husband, I love my job. I'm not going to lie, those words weren't spoken very much this year. So in closing, thanks for the memories, and remember my final three words. Seneca Valley evermore.
Maybe Mrs. Graham will sing for us later, too. No, no? Next, we have also from CVE, I'd like to welcome Pat DeVito. Pat?
Hi, I pretty much want to say what everyone else has said, that it's been a great opportunity to work here, and I had the opportunity to work at CVE, Rowan and Hayne Elementary. And so I can speak to the fact that there are great teachers throughout this district and great paraprofessionals and secretaries and everyone. Thank you to the board for all that you do to keep Seneca Valley as great as it is, and I'm going to miss it as well. As a matter of fact, I kind of am already subbing, but thank you very much, and that's about all I got to say.
Next, from the Academy of Choice, I'd like to welcome Kathy Mahoney. Kathy?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I apologize for reading what I like to say, but I want to make sure I don't forget anything. So I've wanted to be a teacher for as long as I can remember, and I'm blessed to have achieved that goal and spent most of my twenty-two years here at Seneca Valley. At work, I'm happiest when I'm with kids. They are what I've loved about going to school each day. When people hear that I teach high school, they usually get wide-eyed and they say something negative about teenagers, and I always defend them. Don't generalize or compare students with how it was when you were a teenager. Give them a chance, let them be different. These kids will and are doing great things. That being said, who would have ever dreamed that my last year in education would have been spent teaching remotely during a pandemic? So never in a million years could I have imagined a scenario where I was teaching high school online. A strange way to end my teaching career for sure. If I may, I would like to take time to recognize some groups who made my years at Seneca Valley such a great experience. I don't want to leave without saying thank you, and this seemed like a good way to do it.
Thank you to the Seneca Valley Academy of Choice teachers, administrators, administrative assistants and paras who welcomed me into their group a few years ago. But thank you to Denise Manganello for believing in the importance of business education. This outstanding group of cyber educators stepped up to the plate over and over during the educational upheaval of the last year without complaint. They are the best, and I will miss the camaraderie we share. Thank you to all the teachers at the senior high, both retired and present, who I spent time with during cafeteria duty, hall duty, in the coffee room, eating lunch, and all the committees and in services we shared. So many stories of life teaching, teaching high school with this group. Thanks for the memories. It was a joy to work with all of you. Thank you to all of my Hayne Elementary colleagues, both retired and present. You taught me more than you will ever know about education and teamwork. Your dedication to children is incredible, and I'm humbled to have been so welcomed into your world for a few years earlier in my career. You are amazing. Thank you to all the Seneca Valley gifted support teachers, both retired and present, K through twelve, who I worked with during my time at Hayne, and also at the senior high. Your commitment to our kids goes above and beyond. Thank you to the principals who guided me and allowed me the freedom to learn and grow through the years. Here are some of them in alphabetical order, so no one knows my favorites. Mrs. Cara Bobek, Mr. Bob Check, Ms. Michelle Ellis, Mrs. Denise Manganello, Dr. Matt McKinley, and Mrs. Kristen White. Thank you to Dr. Vitale, who's been with me through much of my career at Seneca Valley. Thank you for your guidance and your service and dedication to our school district. Your strength and leadership during this last year has been incredible. Thank you to all the Seneca Valley business teachers who showed their true resiliency and professionalism, no matter what path they were led at Seneca Valley. Adele Marx, Mary Wildman, Ray Pico, Renell Rowe, Maria Brooks and Kelly Schwartz. You are my heroes, and it's been an honor and privilege to work with you. Thank you to all the wonderful students I've been blessed to meet through my years at Seneca Valley. You've been awesome. You brought me to the great, you brought me the greatest joy and fulfillment. And finally, to the Seneca Valley School Board, thank you for all you do, and I appreciate you're giving me time to speak this evening.
Such a bittersweet time, so I really appreciate that, Kathy. Okay, so last but not least, we'd like to welcome Mr. Jerry Miller.
So good evening, everyone. It's an honor, honor for me to be standing here before you with, and retiring with this awesome group of teachers, support staff, and, you know, the amount of years that they have in the district, it's just an honor for me to be part of this group. What I will tell you, and I've prepared a few notes, so bear with me. I want you to know that I'm extremely proud of the special education program that we have here at the Seneca Valley School District. The way we support our exceptional students is pretty amazing. And growing up through the years playing sports and, and my time serving our country, I learned firsthand the value of team. And I know better than most that what we do here at Seneca Valley is because we have an awesome team. And there's just a few people I'd like to recognize. First person was Dr. Vitale. I wanted to recognize her because she was, she's the reason why, the biggest reason why I'm here tonight. In October of two thousand and eight, I got a phone call from Dr. Tracy Vitale asking if I would be willing to submit an application to be the Director of Special Education here at Seneca Valley. I was very content working at a school district down in Allegheny County, thinking that life was really good and, as I said, very content. So, you know, I was just not sure if that's what I wanted to do, so Seneca Valley was gracious enough to allow me to come and visit. And during that visit, I was able to spend some time with Dr. Sean McCarty. At the time, he was the principal of Ryan Goyer Middle School, and also Ms. Deanne Graham, who was the principal of CVE. And, you know, when I left those meetings, I felt real good about what was happening here at Seneca Valley, and I felt intrigued to, to know more and, and wanted to perhaps be part of this awesome school district. So I submit my application, and, you know, you guys decided that, that I would be a good fit for the district, so you hired me. And I will tell you, that changed my life. My life, you know, I'm sure I would have been fine, but no way would it have been as awesome as the last twelve and a half years have been. So I want to thank her for that, for making that phone call, but I also want to thank her for allowing me to do my job. I was hired to be the Director of Special Education here at Seneca Valley, and Dr. Vitale allowed me to do the job. Now, I want to tell you that, you know, when I did not meet her expectations, she let me know about it. But for the most part, you know, she gave me the freedom to do what we needed to do for our exceptional students, so I greatly appreciate that. Next, I want to thank the school board. I have no doubt that you guys are all in when it comes to all of our students. It's important for you to make sure that all of our students are taken care of, and that was clear to me from the very beginning. I am just so appreciative of, you know, what you do for our students. Our goal in special education is to level the playing field for, for our students, and the, the resources and support that you gave over the years has been phenomenal. Every time that I came to you with a plan or a program or initiative, you're always supportive, and I greatly appreciate each and every one of your support over the years because obviously without you guys, it wouldn't be possible. Our special education teachers, I have to, you know, man, unless you've been a special educator, unless you taught special education, you cannot understand the difficulty of that job. Not only are they tasked with teaching our students who struggle to learn, you know, that's, that's difficult in itself. They're also tasked with developing paperwork that has to be perfect for the state of Pennsylvania. As you know, the state comes in and audit this, audits us every six years, and, and a big part of that audit is special ed paperwork, and our teachers do a phenomenal job. The level of dedication that our special education teachers provide on a daily basis to our students is amazing. Their level of empathy for our students is amazing, and, and the things they do on a daily basis, I am truly grateful for, for their hard work and support. Our support staff, and, and I'm trying, I don't want to miss anybody, but certainly, you know, all of our support staff, but mostly our paraprofessionals. These are the folks who roll up their sleeves and do whatever it takes for our students to be successful. They might retest the students, they might escort students from class to class, they might change some diapers, take students out in the community to provide practice for work skills, you know, they're just, they do whatever it takes for, to support our students, and, you know, often without a lot of recognition. So, you know, these folks really, really deserve the recognition, and I want them to understand how thankful I am for their support over the years. And then I just want to mention quickly our central office staff because for the last twelve and a half years, good days or bad days, I was able to come into the office and I would get a smile and encouraging word, so it made the environment so much better to work in. and I would get a smile and encouraging word, so it made the environment so much better to work in. Our special education leadership, our current leadership, you know I'm retiring. You guys have put some folks in place to carry the department forward. And what I will tell you is I work closely with those folks even before you considered them. And I am proud that they're going to represent special education move forward, and I'm confident in their ability to keep the program moving in the right direction. I will tell you that the leadership, along with our school psychologists, are some awesome folks who work really hard, and I'm confident in their abilities moving forward. And then I want to mention our special education secretaries. And these folks, I want to mention by name, because they have a tough job. You know, on any given day, their job is to make me look good, and most times, they're successful. And I will tell you, that is not an easy job. I want to mention Patty Ball, Joan Reineman, Danny Coleing, and Robin McMahon. These folks are awesome secretaries who, if they don't know special education procedures as well as I do, it's darn close. And they make sure that, you know, our district is doing what we need to do to be in compliance. And the support they provide our special education teachers is amazing. I will tell you, each and every one of them that I mentioned comes in early, stays late, and does whatever it takes to get the job done. So I am blessed to be able to work with their group and thankful for all the things they have done. And I just want to conclude, I am done. I want to conclude by saying, you know, what I will miss the most about Seneca Valley is the people. The people I have before me, the people who are sitting in the audience, our students, I will miss them the most because, you know, you heard it time and time again tonight, you know, how awesome a place it is to work at Seneca Valley. And that's no coincidence. You know, you guys hire good people who are dedicated to kids, and it just shows time and time again. I have been truly blessed with the time that I've spent at Seneca Valley. I mean, I'm not sure how it happened, but you know, my higher power was looking out for me and brought me to Seneca Valley, and I am just so blessed. And you know, I'm going to end by saying thank you to the board. Oh, I also want to mention the students, real quick. You know, any day that I was having a bad day, I just stopped into one of our multi-support classrooms, and without fail, when I left there, I was feeling so much better. So I will miss the students as well. So I want to thank you for all that you do for our kids here at Seneca Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We hope to see you back for coffee at Rate or Roast on a regular basis? Okay. Once again, our sincere thanks to all of our retirees for their many years of dedication and hard work on behalf of our students. So thank you again. So, Mr. President, at this time, we'd like to move to the Seneca Valley All-Star Club Member Award. And just to refresh your memory, the All-Star Club was developed to officially recognize and show appreciation to Seneca Valley classified employees, secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodial and maintenance employees, and cafeteria personnel, as well as bus drivers, who are often the unsung heroes of our schools. This month, we are pleased to announce our Seneca Valley All-Star Club Member winner is Kurt Ford, Maintenance with Connaught Quinnesing Valley Elementary School. To recognize Mr. Ford, I would like to welcome to the podium the person who nominated him. Please welcome Mrs. Deanne Graham, Connaught Quinnesing Valley Elementary School Principal. Mrs. Graham?
Thank you, Linda. Good evening. This has been a very special night for CVE, for me too. I've enjoyed seeing all of our talented retirees, many of whom I've worked with over the years. CVE's sweet Riley led the pledge. And now I get to introduce the Seneca Valley All-Star, Mr. Kurt Ford. Although Mr. Ford has worked in our district for many years, he began working at CVE in October of 2019. Upon hearing of Kurt's transfer from the high school, Bob Check reached out to me personally to share how lucky CVE was to be getting him. And boy, was he ever right. Within weeks of Mr. Ford's arrival, he helped make our school one of the best in the district. Kurt cleaned out and organized spaces that would have made the faint of heart turn and run and walk away, for sure. Mr. Check wanted me to share that the thing that always impressed him about Kurt is that he never let the size or difficulty of a project be a reason for not doing it. If the project was good for kids and education, Mr. Ford was always willing to find a solution. And I wholeheartedly agree with that sentiment. I personally do not know how I would have gotten through the pandemic without his guidance and support. Let me share just two quick examples. This past August, it was determined that CVE needed to create a new traffic pattern for busing, as well as increase outdoor areas for mask breaks. A daunting task, to say the least. But Mr. Ford helped us brainstorm ideas. And then he volunteered to make the wooden traffic horses that we would need to block those outdoor spaces to keep our students safe. And because he knows that I like everything to look really pretty, he offered to paint the horses white. And then, just to touch my heart, he painted little tiny CVE bees on those horses. I honestly think he loves our school community as much as I do. On another occasion, Mr. Ford offered to prep and install two new sensory pathways in our hallways over a winter holiday break. Now, in the past, I would have had to secure volunteers to help install them on a Saturday, but not with Mr. Ford there. He knows that if a project helps our young children, it gets done. It is important to note that Mr. Ford supports not only Dr. Francis and I, he also helps almost 75 teachers and staff daily. He does this with a trademark smile, his gentle laugh, soft words of support or understanding, and always, always with quick resolutions to the problems. Mr. Ford goes above and beyond each and every day. He strives to make our school the best place for our young students to learn. I am so grateful for his exceptional dedication and support of our school community. And this is why I feel that Mr. Ford is a Seneca Valley All-Star.
Steve, Dr. McCarty, you may have had a few words you wanted to share as well?
I'll be honest, I never try to follow Deanne Graham, ever, after speaking, because as you can see how eloquent she is. But I did have to share just a couple of things of watching Kurt make a transition from the high school to an elementary school. And you know, much of what Deanne said is so true, but the piece that just sticks out to me more than anything else, he walked in there and basically created his own home. I mean, just the way he reacts with people, how he interacts, how he focuses, every little detail was just like how I would imagine he treats his own home. And the pride that he takes in the work that he does, to watch how every little thing is done, most of the time without ever being asked to do it. You know, you'd walk in that building and see things that were done that weren't even on the radar. But Kurt would look for things to make that experience better for every single human being that walked into that building. An amazing feat to do it that quickly in that environment, it was just a beautiful thing to see. So Kurt, we thank you, and it's those kinds of things that make Seneca Valley great. That's why a night like this with the retirees is such a difficult night at the same time, because those are the kinds of behaviors and the kinds of actions that occur every single day. So it's just a beauty that we now actually are identifying and recognize that, so thank you very much.
So earlier this evening, we gave Kurt his All-Star Award and a nice bag of swag, especially some sweatshirts, some ball caps he can wear while at CVE. So enjoy that. And on behalf of everyone here at Seneca Valley, we once again thank you. I always give our award winners the option to speak, and Mr. Ford said, yeah, no, I'm good. So I completely understand, so thank you again. And to all of our attendees tonight, feel free to stay for the rest of the meeting, or feel free to go home if you would like. So don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. Run and get ice cream, maybe. Except for you, Mr. Miller, you're not allowed to leave. Just teasing, just teasing. You can stay. Mr. President, we have two additional items of recognition this evening that I'll go ahead and share with everyone. The Seneca Valley Academic Decathlon Team once again earned the title of Pennsylvania Decathlon Champions. With a total score of 33,513 points, these stellar students placed first in their division against the top high schools from Western, Central, and Eastern Pennsylvania, excuse me, at the Virtual United States Academic Decathlon Pennsylvania State Competition. Each high school competed with a team of nine students in eight events, art, music, literature, social science, economics, mathematics, science, and essay. All subjects are related to the 2021 theme of the Cold War. Now, that national competition took place this past weekend. I haven't had the opportunity to speak with the senior high to learn how they did, but I will certainly get back to you hopefully next week with more information. Item D, the National Honor Society announced that Simran Jiraman, a senior at Seneca Valley Senior High School and a member of NHS, has been selected as an NHS Scholarship semifinalist. Recipients are chosen based on their demonstrated work to support the four pillars of NHS: scholarship, service, leadership, and character. Ms. Jiraman was chosen from nearly 10,000 applicants and will receive a $3,200 scholarship toward her higher education. We congratulate her, and you will find more information in your backup. Under dates to remember, tomorrow, Tuesday, May 4th, is National Teacher Appreciation Day. May 9th, that's this coming Sunday, is Mother's Day. May 10th, next Monday, we will return here for a regular board meeting at 7:00 PM. May 12th is National School Nurse Day. May 15th is our prom here, starts with the Grand March, and all of that will be livestreamed and broadcasted via SPTV. May 21st marks the last day of instruction for our seniors. May 28th is graduation day. May 31st is Memorial Day holiday, there is no school for students and staff. June 4th is the last day of school for K through 11, and then June 7th will be our final Staff in Service Day. And that is all I have, Mr. President, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Hearing none, thank you. We'll move on, and we're going to go to our Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health update, and that's going to be Dr. Roberts and Ms. Ship. And Dr. Roberts, I see that you're able to livestream it. Folks, this is the presentation that's in front of us. So, Dr. Roberts, I will turn it over to you, sir.
Great. Thank you, board members, for allowing us a couple of minutes to share with you some of the things that we're currently doing with regard to social emotional learning and mental health at Seneca Valley, and looking forward into the next school year. With me tonight as presenters, you'll notice we have Jennifer Shipes, the school counselor at Hayne Middle School, and as our elementary department chair, Bridget Miller, Assistant Principal at Evans City Middle School, Jessica Phillips, a health teacher from Ryan Glore Middle School, and Lisa Graham, the school counselor at the IHS, and she is one of our lead coordinators for the district. So first off, we'll work our way through the buildings from elementary to secondary. So Jen Shipe will be presenting.
Good evening. I'm going to be talking about elementary SEL. An SEL is just an acronym for Social and Emotional Learning. In order for our students to be successful and emotionally healthy throughout life, children must acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills in the following areas. So, understanding and managing their emotions, setting positive goals, feeling and showing empathy for others, establishing and maintaining healthy relationships, and making responsible decisions. So why is SEL important? In order for our students to achieve academically in the classroom and to achieve in life, their social and emotional needs must be met first. Like never before, our youngest learners are coming into the classroom having experienced trauma in a variety of ways. Next slide, please. So some of the supports for mental health that we have at the elementary level, we have Strong Kids, which is mental health awareness, and Mrs. Miller will be talking more about this during her section. We have mindfulness activities embedded into our classrooms and used within small groups and classroom guidance lessons. Every counselor, K through 6, does a variety of group guidance lessons, so group classroom lessons. And those lessons include digital citizenship, understanding emotions, kindness, and empathy. And that is just an example of some of the lessons that we do. We also run small supportive groups. And some of those groups include emotional regulation, worry warriors, and friendship builders, and social skills. And these smaller groups are reserved for those students that just need a little bit more support than what is given to our whole classroom settings. In addition to that, every K through 4 counselor uses the Second Step Program. This is a research-based program that discusses many of these SEL skills and topics that I have discussed. And finally, K through 6 uses the Seven Habits of Happy Children, of Successful Children. And once again, those are different areas that are highlighted, that talk about character, that talk about these social emotional skills that every child needs. I'm now going to turn it over to Mrs. Miller, who will talk about the 5-6 level.
Good evening. You'll see here on the screen an umbrella, and this umbrella illustrates that our Youth Educational Support Services Team, otherwise known as our YES Team, is really the overarching group that works to support our students at the 5-6 level. And you'll actually hear this continues on all the way up through high school. And this happens in a twofold way. First, if you kind of imagine turning that umbrella upside down and using it almost as a net that is cast out to scoop up those students who are struggling academically, behaviorally, or socially and emotionally. Through the process of data analysis, teacher recommendations, and parent recommendations, this YES Team works on catching students in need. The members of the team, as you can see, are our school counselors, our principals, our school psychologists. If the building has Title I, then our Title I teachers. AES stands for our Autistic Support and Emotional Support Teacher, school nurse, and then parents and guardians also participate in this team. The other thing the team does is it provides the services you see listed below the umbrella. On the left-hand side, you'll see proactive, universal core instruction that our school counselors are providing to all 5th and 6th graders. As Mrs. Shipe explained, the first thing that our counselors do is they provide the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Kids and Teens, which is created by Stephen Covey. They provide those lessons to our students. And what our counselors have actually done, because our 5th and 6th graders aren't quite kids, and they're not quite teens, they've created their own lessons for our tweens and modeled these excellent habits. The other component that they do is our Strong Kids Program, which I'll explain in just a few minutes. On the right-hand side, underneath the umbrella, are interventions that are geared towards specific students who need more additional support. Again, as Mrs. Shipe explained, that first list there, the Stress Busters, would be one of our small group programs that our counselors provide for kids who have anxiety. And the check-in, check-in. And the check-in, check-out program is something that teachers and administrators provide more on a one-on-one setting with students who are showing a lack of connection to either their classroom or the school. Then finally, on the handle of the umbrella, we have two additional support services. MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred System of Supports, and that's going to provide academic interventions. And finally, SAP is our Student Assistance Program, and that works with our Community Resources Agent, and they provide community resources to our students and families. Next slide, please. And as I explained before, Strong Kids is a program that we developed here for our fifth and sixth graders to provide social and emotional instruction within the academic setting. We want our students to see social and emotional learning on par with academics such as math and science. So we embed this learning into the academics. Their co-taught lessons where our science and health teacher work alongside our school counselor and teach three different lessons throughout the year. As you can see, the fifth grade lessons are titled Understanding Your Emotions, Understanding Other People's Emotions, and Dealing With Anger, something we see sometimes in our fifth and sixth graders. And our sixth grade lessons deal with clear thinking, solving people problems, and letting go of stress. Now, we're going to move on to Mrs. Phillips, who will talk about RGMS.
Good evening. We are very fortunate at Wrangler Middle School to have health education in both seventh and in eighth grade. We are fortunate to have a unique opportunity to educate adolescents during such a critical time of development, physical, mental, emotional, and social changes. The Health and Physical Education staff are grateful and appreciative of both the administration's and the school board's continued support of these two vital curriculums. Some of the preventative programs we have in place regarding mental and emotional health are the following. The first one is the Signs of Suicide. It's an evidence-based program that is designed for students to identify the signs of depression and suicide in themselves and others. We co-teach those lessons on our teams with our team school counselor in seventh grade and eighth grade health classes. We have a series of different lessons for each grade level that revolve around the acronym ACT. A stands for Acknowledge That You See Signs of Depression, of Suicide in Yourself or Others. C stands for Care, Showing You're Worried About Someone and Offer Support to Them. T stands for Tell, A Trusted Adult So They Can Help. Next slide, please. In addition, several years ago, the health teachers got trained using the Botvin Life Skills Training Program. This is a highly renowned evidence-based prevention program. In seventh grade, we teach the Level One course, and in eighth grade health, we teach the Level Two course. Although the Life Skills Program focuses on the prevention of many different risky behaviors, it does have a very strong emphasis on mental, emotional, social, and interpersonal skills. Some of these topics are things like self-image, self-esteem, decision-making, goal-setting, anxiety, relaxation techniques, stress management, anger management, communication skills, and conflict resolution skills. Next slide, please. Lastly, the YES Program in the middle school uses a referral process for students in need of support services. In addition, there are many educational support groups that are run in our building throughout the year. Some of the support groups that we run are the Grief and Loss Group, Social Groups, and New Student Groups. In the fall, we do a couple of optional evening prevention activities for our seventh grade students. The girls are invited to a pajama-rama event, and the boys are invited to a main event. Students participate in these fun-filled activities throughout the evening guided by the RGMS faculty. These events help students feel connected to the school community and also help to build and foster healthy relationships with staff and other students. Next, Mrs. Graham will explain some of the high school supports.
Good evening. Like Mrs. Shipe mentioned, at the elementary level, our lead team at the secondary campus supports teachers in implementing lessons and activities for students centered around social and emotional learning. For example, recently at the IHS, school counselors worked with ninth-grade English teachers to co-plan and facilitate an activity that asks students to think critically about privilege, equity, and equality. The goal of this activity was to foster perspective-taking and enhance empathy in our students to create a more inclusive school and community. Also through lead, our secondary buildings participate in school-wide activities designed to create a positive school culture and provide opportunities for students to participate in service learning. For example, this spring, the IHS is hosting a day of service on May twelfth, where we will be collecting and packaging donations for personal care kits for Global Links. Next slide, please. As it was mentioned previously, mindfulness has been a great focus across the district with regards to supporting students' mental health. A review of research has shown that mindfulness practices improve attention, resilience, emotional regulation, compassion, and empathy, and reduce stress levels and anxiety in our students. As a result, schools that intentionally teach students mindfulness practices have seen increases in student academic performance, test scores, fewer office behavior referrals and suspensions, and less incidences of student anxiety and mental health needs. So to expand the benefits of mindfulness across the district, in 2019, we received funding through a grant that Butler County Drug and Alcohol was awarded to implement mindfulness training for staff members. So during the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 school years, we have had sixty teachers, counselors, administrators, and staff volunteer to participate in mindfulness training. As a result of this, teachers across the district have facilitated mindfulness lessons and activities with their students. Most recently, our students in ninth and tenth grade PE classes participated in a day of mindfulness in our outdoor classroom. Also, in 2019, the IHS created a mindfulness room connected to the school counseling office. The mindfulness room provides a space for students to decompress, reflect, and engage in mindful activities. To further fund mindfulness initiatives at the secondary campus, we would like to thank the board for recently giving approval for SV to apply for a grant to create mindfulness rooms at RGMS and the senior high school. Next slide. Also, at the secondary level, we do continue some of the supports that you heard about from the elementary and middle schools. So first, our health classes in tenth grade teach a mental health unit where they revisit the Signs of Suicide program that Mrs. Phillips discussed, also with the support of school counselors. And we also continue the YES process that begins at the elementary level to support students with mental health or other barriers to learning. At the high school level, this team works closely with community supports such as our liaison from the Center for Community Resources, drug and alcohol prevention organizations such as Keystone Wellness, and our school-based therapists from Glade Run. So now, Dr. Roberts is going to speak more about mental health supports and proactive planning for our students.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Graham. So I'm very proud that throughout this presentation, you've heard how we're working together. Just over a year ago, slightly before the pandemic, we had a team of fifteen, including some of our school counselors that were certified as instructors in trauma-informed school practices. And they have been providing periodic training to our staff on how to recognize and support students that have experienced trauma. Throughout the presentation tonight, you've heard about a tiered approach where at one level, all students are receiving information and skills that they need to know as they grow and develop. And then you've heard about Tier Two supports, where some students might need a small group or might need a short-term support to be able to get through a rough spot. And of course, there are Tier Three students that have shown that they need individual supports and something more comprehensive than what we are able to provide in the council and office or in the classroom setting. And so those students are appropriate for in-school therapy or out-of-school therapy. And I should mention before we move on that our school counselors are certainly the hub of much of this work, and I'm very appreciative for them. But do know that they work in three domains. So the social emotional, what we're talking about tonight. But they also serve as academic counselors and as career counselors. So there's a lot of responsibilities on their shoulders throughout the school day, and certainly this year in the pandemic. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention briefly that we have an employee assistance program. So we haven't forgotten about our staff. If they're experiencing difficulties, and those could be in a variety of areas. It could be related to financial planning, it could be related to legal issues, or it could be a mental health concern. They have resources available to them that they can get private and confidential support. But speaking of our students, one of the programs that we're very proud of is in-school therapy. And so we have therapists contracted through Glade Run Lutheran Services in all nine of our school buildings, seven full-time counselors, to be exact. And those therapists provide one-on-one support and small group support for our kiddos that are in need of it. And I do want to share with you as a board some of the benefits that we see in our in-school therapy program. Our students benefit because they get to therapy appointments on a regular basis. We found that out-of-school therapy, parents and families are strapped for time and for resources and don't always consistently get their kids to therapy appointments when they're needed. So the availability of doing it in school has definitely impacted successfully our students. Also, students are able to apply immediately the skills that they're learning in therapy session in this classroom setting. And we're able to coordinate what's going on in the classroom with what the student is working on in therapy. And lastly, we found that it has reduced the stigma surrounding mental health in our schools. Our school therapists are part of the school staff. And students see them in the hallways, and they see them as a regular part of what goes on in school. And we certainly see that as a benefit. And for the public and certainly for board members, if you'd like more information about the mental health and in-school therapy program, there's a link there in the slide that you can see. At this point in time, we would be glad to entertain any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from any board member? Looking around, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the presenters. I find this amazing. The two things that impressed me the most, I think, are the sort of multidisciplinary approach. And secondly, the fact that these programs begin in the earliest years and go through the student's entire experience here at Seneca Valley. And it's not just a series of steps or checkboxes that we can complete and say, there, we've done the job. So my question would be a little bit off the beam, maybe, but I'm curious. We talked about all of these services that you provide at the beginning of the COVID experience, and now hopefully we're coming out the other side. What lessons have you learned? How successful were you? Where did you fall down? How can we make things better when the next pandemic comes along?
Well, I'll start, and then I'll look to my colleagues. We hope there won't be another pandemic soon, first. But secondly, I think that we have learned that we have to rely on our people, that we have incredibly skilled people that will step up when the need arises, and that we have a great team. I think that our staff recognize when they need help and are able to turn to a colleague to be able to step in when they just don't have any energy left to share or are able to prop up a student that's in need. And I'll look to the rest of the team if anybody else would like to chime in.
I would like to add that I also have seen incredible resilience in our children, our students. I can remember last summer discussing, how are we going to do this? How are our kids going to even, our littlest ones, wear masks? And that's not even an issue because of their resiliency and because teachers have modeled that over and over again. So that's probably my biggest takeaway. Thanks for asking.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes, I have one question. But these programs that you've outlined from K to twelve, they seem multi-layered. My question is, how do these students get identified? Or is there multiple areas? Is it, you know, the teacher in the front line? Is it a parent request? How do we, like, what's our defense so we don't have a kid falling through the cracks? If, if, that's my question, is how do they get identified and funneled into the correct programs?
Mrs. Graham, can you talk a little bit about how students come to be known for needing support?
Sure. So I would say our YES Team is really, at least at the secondary level, where referrals are given, right? So it would be from a teacher or from a parent, a peer, an administrator, or school counselor, really anyone who interacts with the student is able to make a referral to our YES Team. And our YES Team really is a trained group of professionals, making up the school counselor, some trained teachers, administrators. And then we work as a team to come up with the best plan for the student, set goals, and then connect them with services that would most benefit them. Anyone else wants to add? Sure, thanks for asking.
Anyone else?
I would like to add too, I think, especially at the elementary level, you know, we are so blessed that we, especially at the fifth and sixth grade level, we have two counselors. And so by the time I cycle through with my students through sixth grade, I know them. So as I'm doing morning duty, and I'm doing lunch duty, and I'm doing afternoon duty, you know, and just being present in the classrooms, you can get a feel with our younger learners of when they are, when they're struggling and when something is off. Our teachers have become excellent investigators or detectives, as well as really some of our referrals or some information comes to us directly from peers. And especially our younger learners, they do a really nice job. If they feel something is not right with their friend or something is going on, they are, you know, down here, they have that trust with our principals and with my co-counselor and I that they let us know, and then we can go from there.
I can add one thing specific about the middle school. In the middle school, we are fortunate that we have the teaming approach. And as a result of our teaming, we share the same students, and we meet every day. And so that allows us to really prevent kids from falling through the cracks or as best we can to eliminate as many kids as we can falling through the cracks because we're able to work together, sharing those same students on a daily basis.
Thank you. Very dynamic. That all makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. McCarty, did you, no? I want to thank you. You know, it's great that we have this in place. And it's a shame that Dr. Vitale isn't here because this has been one of, you know, her, she's taking up the torch on this because she recognized years ago that mental health was going to be an issue and was an issue, and we need to get ahead of it. And the fact that you folks have brought evidence-based programs and you're continually updating and changing them to fit the needs of our students and to make sure that, you know, we're not having anyone fall through the cracks, as Ms. Whittle asked. You know, it's amazing. I never would have, you know, thought about it that way, but you're making sure that it's not just, you know, passing on and making sure that these kids are being taken care of. And it's what makes us, you know, the great district that we are. Dr. Roberts talking about the component that makes sure that our staff and, you know, our employees also have, you know, an avenue if they need it, was something that I didn't consider either. So the fact that it's there and you've offered that and implemented this into this whole program has made this such a success. So, you know, I'm very appreciative of all the work that you've done. And it's nice to see, you know, a presentation like this because, you know, we're not seeing, you know, mental health issues come up to us, which means that you folks are doing an excellent job. So that, you know, keep up the great work. And if there's anything else that you need, of course, you know, we're here to support you in everything that you do. And if there's anything else that you need, of course, you know, we're here to support you and and everything that you do.
Thank you very much. Unless there's no other comments from the presenters, I'll give you a last chance. Then we'll we'll move on. Thank you again. We'll move on to our agency reports and we'll start with VOTEC. Mr. Peterson, Mr. Jacobs, I don't know who's going to take first watch here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next J O C joint operating committee meeting is this Thursday, so most of the news is old from our last report. We we did have an emergency J O C meeting to discuss the incident that occurred with several of the students. We were assured that immediate actions taken were appropriate and authorized the school to engage the services of a third party to further investigate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Move on to the IU report and I do have a brief IU report from our meeting last Wednesday. The the good news, well, it's nothing's bad news, but the good news is we were able to pass a new five-year support contract. So that went very well. It was a very, I hate to say easy negotiation, but it was very pleasant. It was very nice and we were able to get a new contract done and everyone is is happy with it. So that that's always a good thing. The next part is on the convention. I know I had mentioned that we weren't sure what was going to happen with the convention because there were, you know, open positions. We were hoping it was just going to be those folks that would apply would just fill the open seats. And of course, that didn't happen because of COVID, we're not going to have a convention. So they are going to do a mail-in ballot type approach instead. So in the next week or two, you should start seeing ballots arrive in the mail. At that time, there we're going to have until June 15th to get them in. I there's going to be little bios provided from all the candidates. They've been asked to get all that to the IU by, I think it's this Friday. So hopefully, you know, we'll start seeing those ballots in a week or so after that. This is the first time we've ever done anything like this. Typically, those of you that have gone to the convention before, you know that, you know, us as board members and and you folks as volunteers will help count ballots and things like that. All the 27 districts have a different weighting of each of their ballots. So at Seneca, ours are weighted more than everyone else's based on, you know, the size of the district and things like that. So how they're going to do that, you know, they're going to have the staff up there, keep them under lock and key, take care of compiling the results and reporting on those results. I will let you know if anything else changes. They're going to keep us informed as this process goes on. But, you know, if you see something from the IU, don't throw that away. Just, you know, keep an eye out for that ballot. So and I will make sure that I keep you informed as well. Any questions about the IU? Hearing none? We'll move on to the legislative reports and I have one prepared here. So let me pull that up. So the House of Representatives was not in session this last week. They're scheduled to reconvene actually today. The Senate was in in session. So there's some some interesting things that I thought that came out of the state government committee. The first one is around the right-to-know reforms that are out there. So the first bill is a Senate Bill 312, which would allow reasonable fees to be charged by school districts for commercial requests. And I know Ms. Andres, who can speak to us some of this, you know, in the beginning of, I'm going to say the the decade, last decade, we saw a lot of right-to-know requests and a lot of it was being used for commercial. You know, who did we use for paper tiles and things like that? So you would see that those lists compiled via right-to-know request, they would get our contracts, things like that. And then these companies would then sell that information to others, you know, so that they could bid on our our services. So now, you know, I put, I know our staff through, had to jump through a lot of hoops and a lot of hours to do that. So now they're saying if this bill is passed by the full Senate and signed by the governor, it would allow us to recoup some of those costs. The next one on the Senate was Bill 552, which would allow agencies to put, and agencies being one of us is because it's all right to know, to petition the Office of Open Records for relief of the vexatious requesters. And a vexatious requester is defined as those having and using the right-to-know law with, this is a quote now, "with malicious intent to intimidate, harass, or pump, publish an agency which results in bogging down the agency and wasting taxpayer resources." This is one of the things you write to know requests. We always want to share information, but there are some times when there's some entities out there that would just flood you with them. You know, not for any information purposes, but just basically to harass. So they're they're trying to to fix that as part of the right-to-know laws. Moving on, there was another Senate bill that passed, Senate Bill 83, which created a pilot program for community colleges and universities in Pennsylvania to give interested high school students training and firefighting. I find that interesting as as we all know and we've heard, you know, there's a shortage of folks that are, you know, volunteering to become, you know, firefighters. So this is hopefully, because we have such a large volunteer firefighter system, this should help hopefully to get, you know, more people interested. So that was one of the things I thought was interesting. The last bit of information that I'd like to pass on is on Peasars. And on April 19th, of the day of our last meeting, the board met to discuss recertifying the nine-year return rate that we had certified at our December meeting. Recertification discussion was done because there was an error discovered in the data used by our outside consultant when they calculated return. That error adjusted the return rate such that the shared risk was triggered. A shared risk was put into place under Act 5 and that was basically, you know, if there were certain underperformance by the fund, then teachers hired after certain dates would have to contribute more to make up for it. In December, it was very close, but the shared risk wasn't initiated after the recalculation shared risk was. So it's going to affect all those hired teachers, administrators hired after July 1st, 2011. And that would be the class of T E or T F. They're going to have an additional half a percent withheld from their paychecks. That will be put into the fund directly for them. So that is their money, but they're still going to have to contribute that for the retirement. Those that were hired after July 1st, 2019, those would be the class T G T H. They'll have an additional three-quarter percent withheld from their pay. When it came to the recertification, I was against it. There were only two of us that were against it and it did pass the board. Even though that miscalculation, recertification did trigger the shared risk, I contend and it was backed by Senator Brown, who was a key member of the Senate that crafted the shared risk legislation, that it was not the intention of the shared risk legislation in a case such as this. And I argued that it was not the intention of the shared risk because the miss in the returns was only a temporary dip caused by COVID and not a long-term underperformance that was the basis for the initial shared risk legislation. And I asked that the following data points be considered. These were from the S and P 500 and the following are the return rates that were used as a start date of February 21st, 2020. And that was a date prior to the COVID market downturn. So on June 30th, comparing to the February 21st date, the S and P 500 had a return of negative 9.84. That rate is important because that's the rate that was used to calculate what ended up triggering shared risk. By July 30th, that rate for the S and P had decreased to a negative 1.9%. So that was an 80% improvement in one month. By August 30th, the S and P was up 500, or I'm sorry, 5.1%, which was 150% improvement. And by December 31st, about the time that we certified the rate initially, the S and P was up 12.53%, a 227% improvement. So if it wasn't for that COVID dip, we'll call it, shared risk wouldn't have been triggered anyway. The impact to the school districts and the state, if we did not recertify, would have been approximately $200 for every $1 million in payroll. So for Seneca Valley, that would have been a $12,000 effect for us. And as they, you know, as an example of what the board did without my support, and I was against this, in November of 2020, we, as a board, passed a revised asset allocation, which is going to increase the Peasars rate 6%. And the state and school districts' contribution will increase $20,800 for every $1 million in payroll starting in the 2022, 23 school year. So that's going to be an impact of $1.25 million to our district. So just as a, you know, one was important to them, the other wasn't. So unfortunately, I lost that. I fought as hard as I could, but, you know, can't always get what you want, I guess. So that that's my update on legislative. Is there any questions that anyone has? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. And in your backup, you will find the financial reports for the operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, athletics, food services, tax collection reports and capital project funds. We'll move to the COVID 19 update. Dr. McCarty, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a brief report for you this evening. Butler County is back in the moderate level of COVID transmission with a PCR rate of 7.4% and an incident rate of 90.5%. This is our first consecutive week back in moderate. And as a reminder, we need two consecutive weeks of moderate transmission to come off of the restrictions of the attestation form. Mr. President, this concludes the COVID 19 update for this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Dr. McCarty? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Next week, we're going to look to approve, we're going to have a look to approve a lot of things. First is going to be the approval of our minutes. And these are included in your backup from our work session of April 12th, 2021 and our action meeting of April 19th, 2021. We'll look to approve the Treasury's report that was providing our backup. Our general fund bills, we'll look to approve those and these are included in your backup as well in the total of $3,979,242.45. And our construction fund bills also provide our backup of $1,720,275.51. If there's any questions on any of those items, please direct those to Ms. Partner. We'll move on to administrative action. Mr. Nichols, please.
Yes, Mr. President, we'll be talking next week and looking for board approval for several items. The first is a group of board policies. To approve the following board policies, they are all detailed in your backup. The first is Policy 904, Public attendance at school events. That is a revision. It will be the second and final reading. Policy 911, broadcasting of school events, also a revision. It will be the second and final reading. Policy 203, communicable diseases and immunization, another revision, second and final reading. Finally, Policy 822, automated external defibrillator, a revision. It is the second and final reading. Second item is a transportation contract. To approve the transportation contract for one family to transport their child to Providence Charter School during the 2021, 2022 school year. That is detailed in your backup. And finally, to approve a student adjudication, it is number 2020-21-01, approving that student adjudication. And it is also detailed in your backup.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nichols. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Nichols? Hearing none, we'll move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you. Next week, we'll look to approve the following business finance actions. First is related change orders. Approve the construction change orders for Erman Crest Elementary/Middle School at Erman Road. Second item, Conde Quineson Valley Elementary, CVE re-roofing contract award. Approve Dura Last Inc. through the Government Cooperative Purchasing Program. Tips, the inter-local purchasing system vendor agreement for the CVE re-roofing project to be completed in the summer of 2021 in the amount of $70,254.80. Pending solicitor review for the final agreement and included in your backup. Next, field lighting project. Approve the proposal from tower engineering to prepare electrical design and engineering services for the field lighting project on the secondary campus pending solicitor review. 2015 bonds to be utilized and included in your backup. Next is restroom and locker room facility. Approve the proposal from Echoes Architecture to design a restroom and locker room facility adjacent to the softball field. Also pending solicitor review and utilizing 2015 bonds included in your backup. Next are bid authorizations. We'll authorize the administration to seek bids for the following summer 2021 projects. Field lighting at softball and baseball fields, curb and sidewalk repairs district-wide, Intellisite added to Ryan Goyer Middle School upgrade door access, secondary campus signage upgrades, directional informational and location. Next is bleacher bracing deck support bracket to the senior high school bleachers. CVE hard door, CVE door hardware replacement. Next is boiler and boiler room for the senior high school. Currently, the intermediate high school boilers serve both the IHS and the senior high school. And lastly, re-roof Rowan Elementary School through tips, the interlocal purchasing system vendor agreement. Next item on the agenda for next week is professional photography contract awards. Award the following professional photography contracts for the 2021, 22 school year, including your backup. Two contract awards, one first is the K through 12 portraits contract to Justin's. The second, yearbook events and activities contract to Bill Sowers Photography. Next item for next week, deposit and treasurer appoint next to your bank as a as depository and treasurer for the 2021, 2022 school year. That agreement's in the backup. Next, we will review that and approve the proposed 2020, 20, excuse me, 2021, 22 budget. Approve the proposed 2021, 22 budget in the amount of $145,712,582 and authorize the budget to be made available for public inspection, which is included in your backup. And lastly, the board secretary, afford, appoint Lisa Mislin as the board secretary effective July 1st, 2021 for a term of four years.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Peterson?
First of all, congratulations to Mr. Jacobs for that stellar job of reading. I'm just curious, under bid authorizations, number three, sorry, number four, secondary campus signage upgrades. We've always wanted a welcome to Seneca Valley sign at the entrance to the campus. Do we know, is that included in this project or?
Oh, Mr. Miller, if you're on the line, sir.
Can you hear me, Mr. Peterson?
I can. Thank you.
At this point, this would be basically your general campus signage. That would be part of a bigger picture in terms of getting the approvals and everything for any type of a sign for the actual campus itself out at the road. What this project would do would get directional. I go around the campus now and a lot of the signage is is old, outdated. There's times on it that doesn't, we got an aquatic facility that we don't have any location to. So it's to help our our parents, fans, opposing, you know, anybody else coming on campus to be able to get their way, more wayfinding and identifying areas of where the senior high school is, where parking is for students, staff, things like that, just to complete overall. And the reason that I that I'm thinking of this is I'm going through the actual shop drawings, some metal right now for for Erman, where we're going to be installing these and how that all works. So it was the perfect time to start looking into our secondary campus because we do get a lot of, I've been seeing a lot of confused drivers visiting our campus and they get into areas that really they shouldn't get into. So that it would not be part of this project. That's part of a bigger. I believe there was some discussion years ago about types of signage, whether it's, you know, just a brick and mortar type signage or if it's a video signage. But that would, that is not part of what I'm asking for on this bid authorization.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Still in the bucket list.
I know that's, I mean, it is something we have discussed fairly recently.
Correct. COVID, I think, hit right as we were getting into some of those discussions. And so it went to the back burner again. But I'm sure in the next, who, it's soon, I'll just say that, you know, we'll probably take that up again and have that discussion further. Any other questions, comments?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say I'm looking forward to another four years with Lisa Mislin as our board secretary.
Absolutely. Couldn't ask for a better one. I'd also like to bring up, you know, a lot of the bid authorizations and projects that the the public will see here are things that we've had on our capital improvement maintenance. are things that we've had on our uh capital improvement maintenance plan for a number of years. Um, and we had been projecting them out to be done twenty-one, twenty-two. So, you know, this is not things that have surprised us as a district. We've been planning for it. It's all part of the the larger feasibility study we started some five, six years ago. So, um, nothing here is really a surprise. It's all things that we've wanted to do and we just keep after it. So. If there's no other questions, uh, we will move on to personnel and I'll ask Mr. Woodson to take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next week, under Personnel, I'll be looking to make a motion to approve the resignations, appointments, leaves, and retirements, as having been provided of board and backup and discussed in executive session.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are in receipt of, I think, seven or eight pieces of communication, plus we received some uh later this afternoon. Um, I can say that I have not got to the ones we received this afternoon yet. However, we do review all of them and, uh, you know, we they have been distributed. So I will look now, there is no one that has signed up for public comment. Is that correct? So at this point, I would look for, is there anything else to be brought before the board? Hearing and seeing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn our meeting. Thank you, Mr. Woodson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.